Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. At the outset, I'd like to read the following notice, which has also been distributed. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I take this opportunity to request that everyone take a moment to switch off his or her cellphone? As usual, CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. Future meetings of the Board will also be webcast live. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. Congratulations to Trustees Ugo Morales and Mark Shaw, who were both reappointed on October 22 to seven-year terms on our board. Thank you both for your exemplary service. And congratulations also to Trustee Robert Ramos on his recent reelection as Chairperson of the University Student Senate. When you arrive, Robert, we will welcome you and thank you for your exemplary service. I'd like to remind the trustees that the Chancellor and I have scheduled a dinner with newly-elected CUNY student leaders on Monday, December 3, 2007, from 6:00 to 8:00 in this room. I hope as many trustees as possible can attend, and we look forward to meeting with the student leaders. Now, I take great pleasure in congratulating CUNY Law School Dean Michelle Anderson, who with her spouse Gavin McCormick welcomed even core Anderson to the world on September 29. Congratulations, Dean Anderson. And speaking of good news, the preliminary results of this year's bar pass rate for first-time test takers are in, and CUNY Law School's rate is 82.75 percent. For the first time, for the first time higher than the state average passing rate of 79 percent. Congratulations to the administration, the students, and the faculty of the law school. The Board will recall that we approved a series of reforms recommended by former Dean Glenn and the Chancellor four years ago. Plainly, the hard work that followed these reforms led by Dean Anderson is paying off, and I know that Chancellor Goldstein may want to speak a bit more about this in his I would like to note that Trustee Kate Pacilli was reappointed as an associate committee member on the National Association of Community College Trustees, the Committee on Governance and Bylaws. Trustee Pacilli previously served for three consecutive years on ACCT's Committee on Finance and Budget. Thank you, Trustee Pacilli, for this continued service. I'd also like to thank Trustees Rita DiMartino and Frida Foster Talbert for representing the Board as speakers at the Third Annual CUNY New York Times Knowledge Network Women's Leadership Conference, held on November 16, presided over by President Gail Mello, with the active participation of the women presidents and the university professional school deans of CUNY. The conference was very well-attended and a great success. Speaker Christine Quinn and several ranking state and city legislators and corporate and media leaders helped lead the panels. Thank you all for such a successful conference. Now, I have the sad duty to take note of the recent passing of three distinguished members of the CUNY family. Dr. Frederick H. Burkhart, who served with great distinction as a member of the Board of Higher Education from 1966 to 1973, and as its chairman from 1969 to 1971, died on September 23. Dr. Leo Corby, whose 25 years of extraordinary service to CUNY inspired so many members of our community, passed away on October 2. Finally, Dr. Arthur Kornberg, Nobel Prize-winning biochemist and City College alumnus of the class 1937, died on October 26, and we mourn these losses. May I now call on Trustee Rita DiMartino to announce college and faculty honors?
Is it on?
Yes.
Brooklyn College professors Ameritai Vivian Acosta and Linda Jean Carpenter were among the 100 most influential sports educators in America, a listing released by the Institute for International Sport. Congratulations. Dr. Roscoe C. Brown, Jr., Director of the Center for Urban Education Policy and University Professor at the Graduate School and University Center, was nominated by Chancellor Goldstein and received a 2007 Liberty Medal from the New York Post. Congratulations. Baruch College woman distinguished professor of accountancy Douglas Carmichael was named one of Accountancy's today's top 100 Most Influential People. Director of Baruch's Computer Center for Visually Impaired People Karen Gorgue was named a co-winner of the first Touch of Genius Prize awarded by the National Braille Press in partnership with the Gibney Family Foundation. Congratulations. Ten CUNY faculty members have received 2007-2008 Fulbright Grants. They are Baruch College Professor of Art History Gail Levin, Brooklyn College Professor of American History Robert D. Johnson, Hunter College Economics Professors Stephen Gorlick and Jonathan Conning, Hunter Film Studies Professor Christopher R. Stone, and Hunter adjunct lecturer Anita Cheng, John Jay College American History Professor Michael J. Pfeiffer, Queens College Law Professor Sidney L. Haring, and Queens Anthropology Professor Larissa Swedell, College of Staten Island Political Science Professor Jane E. Marcus Delgado, and Bronx Community College Applied Linguistics Professor Steven Moskowitz. Congratulations to you all, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on Trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Queensborough Community College students Frandula Sevas, Marie Pierre Peien, and Guy Supas have won awards for their research presentations at the annual biomedical research conference for minority students. Their participation was funded by the Queensborough Community College, National Institutes of Health Bridges to Future Programs. Congratulations. Baruch College junior Christian De Rojas was awarded second place in the Alliance for Minority Participation 2007 Student Research Conference. KP MGLP-selected Baruch students Ruth Fortune and Sharut Karnwat for its National Future Diversity Leaders Program. Congratulations to Baruch. Hunter College has been awarded fifth seed within the 61 field team, the highest in national collegiate athletic association programs' history, for the 2007 NCAA Division III Women's Volleyball Championship. Congratulations. Nine out of nine recipients of this year's education fund of Women's Forum, Inc. awards are for women from six CUNY colleges. They are Linda Dwyer, Sonia Valentin of Brooklyn College, Patricia Jawoski of City College, and Hung Zin Lee Yu of Hunter College, Susie Myers and Elizabeth Soto of John Jay College, Avita Belmonte of New York City College of Technology, and Donna Ash of York College. The award recognizes extraordinary effort in overcoming adversity and restructuring their lives for success. Congratulations. Four Queens College students were among the cohort of 80 selected as 2007-2008 Spectrum Scholars by the American Library Association's Office for Diversity. They are Yago Said, Kyura Sarah Geisler, Edward Maxwell, and Amina Sakanguiwa. Congratulations. Sophie Davis student Anari Garcia, together with the Office of Mayor/ Director of Adult Education Anthony Tassi, presented an item at a Department of Health and Human Services-sponsored conference, specifically on the initiative collaboration within the mayor's office of health literacy for medical students. An outstanding fellow, Ms. Garcia Was, one of the two participating students. Congratulations. Four senior Hostos Community Ecology Radiology students won third place for their presentation at the annual New York State Society of Radiologic Sciences Conference Student Bowl. They are Dani Alonso, Luis Garcia, Dani Montoya, and Hector Reyes. Their preparation and confidence was evidenced when two of the students twice corrected the judges on questions. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the September 24, 2007 meeting is in your trustee's calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and let me echo the words of congratulations to Trustee Shaw and Trustee Morales and Trustee Ramos on your second iteration of ascendancy onto this august body. We continue to look forward to working with all three of you. I have very good news on enrollment numbers that I'd like to share with the Board. Headcount enrollment has, for the first time in probably a decade, reached over 232,000 students. This is about a 2.7 increase over last year. And most notably, FTE students increased by 3.6 percent. Mr. Chairman, I think this is a very important number because when you look under the hood of what that number represents, it is dominated by students retained at the university as opposed to new students coming to the university. This has been a strategy that we've been working on for some time, and it portends well for the future retention and graduation rates continuing their upward trend. While these numbers increase, I'm also pleased to tell you that the ethnic and racial diversity of the institution continues to be rich and to very much follow the ethnic and racial patterns in the city. From 1999 through 2007, we've seen a 16 percent increase in Native Indian and Alaskan students at the university. It's a very small base, but an increase nonetheless. Asian students increasing by about 64 percent, Black students increasing by about 25 percent, Hispanics increasing by 50 percent, and white students increasing by 26 percent. So across the board, we're seeing rich increases across all of these racial and ethnic groups, which is something that the university has always focused on, and I'm glad to report that those numbers are certainly holding up. I have talked not only to the presidents directly but to this Board that as we look over the next few months, we see two things that are converging very, very rapidly. One being the change in the political tensions that exist in Albany, and hopefully, over time, that's going to sort itself out. But at the same time, you know, I've reported on the fixed income and credit derivative markets having a very, very serious and chilling effect on not only the financial markets but infiltrating into the overall economy. And certainly, these two factors converging are going to have a material effect on the state budget on a forward-going basis. But nonetheless, I continue to be optimistic, in part because the Commission on Higher Education has essentially reported and finished the dominant amount of its business. The report is going to be released right after December 1. We took a very active role on this commission, and I would like to thank Trustee Mark Shaw, who played a very pivotal role, President Eduardo Marti, who chaired an important committee, President Marcia Keys, who was very active as well, distinguished professor Robert Paswell, Lauren Tellerman of the McCauley Honors College at Queens College, and wonderful staff work by Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave, Dean David Crook, and Deputy General Counsel Jane Sovereign. So you could see that CUNY had a very deep and impressive position on the commission. And when you see the recommendations, these recommendations are going to be very forward-thinking and hopefully, over time, will result in significant investment in the two great public systems that we have in New York State. SUNY and CUNY, for the very first time, Mr. Chairman, are walking in unison. I reviewed the SUNY budget request this afternoon, and they are incorporating into their budget message, as we have incorporated in the past three years, the compact. We're now referring to it as a New York State Compact, distributing the revenue expectations among various stakeholders, and they are following very much along with us and in partnership as we move forward. For the first time, the wind is at our backs, and the velocity of our movement is consistent with one another, and I think that can only portend well when the legislature sees these two systems thinking in very similar ways. Both the chairman and I were delighted when Carl Hayden was named as the chairman of the SUNY Board. Both the chairman and I worked very closely with Carl Hayden in 1999, when we worked to get the regions to embrace the reforms that I think very much derive from the famous Schmidt Report and is responsible, I would say, Mr. Chairman, for many of the successes that this university has enjoyed today. So we look forward to a very warm and mutually supportive working relationship with SUNY and have helped the chairman think through some of the issues that SUNY has. I'm pleased to say that we had a very successful participation with the Somos El Futuro Conference that took place a few weeks ago in San Juan. I had the opportunity to spend a considerable amount of time alone with the governor and a considerable amount of time alone with Speaker Silver, talking about the university, and was very, very pleased with the college presidents around the table that participated at that conference. And I look forward to the very good work that was started by President Ricardo Fernandez in developing relationships with universities in Puerto Rico. This year, we hired the largest number of Hispanic faculty in this university in many years, and it was a result of a concerted effort to really develop those relationships, and we're starting to see the results of that now. The governor will present his budget message in mid-January, and obviously, we have been working very closely with not only the Division of Budget but members of the executive intercor of advisors to the governor and the governor themselves to try to shape some of the ideas and recommendations that are going to come out in that budget message. But I think so fundamental to the thinking obviously will be the results of this commission report, which I will report on when it is made a public document. On the city budget side, like all other agencies in the city of New York, although we are not a city agency, we received a pro-- we participated in the program to eliminate the gap called the PEG reductions. This represented about a 2.5 percent cut for this fiscal year and a 5 percent cut for next year in our community colleges. This amounts to 5.3 million, but when you annualize it, it's probably double that amount of money, and about $8 million for FY09. I wrote to Mark Page, the budget director, about the impact on these cuts, and we're waiting to see the results of the final recommendations when they become public. We had a wonderful day about a month ago. We euphemistically called this "CUNY on the Hill." We had a large number of presidents. We had trustees that worked with us throughout the day with the congressional delegation, talking about some of the needs that the university has had over the years, and wanted to thank Trustee Ugo Morales for his participation and Trustee Sam Sutton, among others, who participated. It was a very, very important day for us, and we'll wait and see how the university comes out in the latest budget recommendations. I just want to follow very quickly what the chairman said about the law school pass rates. I just want to remind all of you that it was just a few years ago when the pass rates at the CUNY Law School were in the 60s and low 70s. There was even a time when it was lower than that, and you remember this Board with the work of the chairman, myself, and when I first started discussions with Michelle Anderson about coming to lead the law school, I emphasized how critically important it was for true reform to be made in the process of admission standards, retention standards, the reformation in the curriculum. This is always a very difficult thing to do. Mr. Chairman and the Board, I just really want to commend the courageousness, the focus, and the determination of our new dean in making this thing happen. This is, to quote a tired phrase, "a paradigm shift" in the history of the CUNY Law School. And I want to make one more prophetic statement that there is further very good news, I submit, that's going to come out about the CUNY Law School in about a month's time, and I look forward to Michelle Anderson reporting on that when we reconvene in January. Today, this, we are coming to the end of CUNY Month. CUNY Month is a brainchild of Jay Hirschensohn. You cannot see a bus without these wonderful posters. We've had something like, I'm told, 425 events in the university. The Let Freedom Ring Calendar is in front of all of you. I implore you to look at this carefully. It is an extraordinary work that was led by Jay Hirschensohn and the Wagner Archives at LaGuardia Community College with the support of JP Morgan Chase and TIAA Craft. And it is not just a calendar but will derive curricula and teaching, other teaching material that we hope will have profound impact on the subjects of this. I'm delighted to announce that Roger Hurtig, an alumnus of the university, who was just awarded by President Bush the National Humanities Medal of the National Endowment for the Humanities. Chairman Schmidt knows Roger Hurtig well. I know Roger well. He brings great distinction to the university, joining people like James Buchanan, the Nobel Laureate in Economics, Bernard Lewis, a fine observer of the Muslim world, Shelby Steele, John Updike, Brian Lamb. The list goes on, and it's wonderful to have Roger, who has been such an enormous supporter of the McCauley Honors College and other work at Baruch College, to be honored in this most important way. I'm delighted to tell you that CUNY stepped up to the plate recently, that with Hostos Community College and CUNY in the Heights, we raised a fair amount of money for relief efforts in the Dominican Republic and Haiti as a result of the tropical storm Noel that took place a few weeks ago, and I want to thank Ugo Morales for his very, very good work in that important way. Selma Batman, our university provost, was honored by the Asian American Asian Research Institute at its last meeting. Bronx Community College Child Development Center recently honored Vice Chancellor Gary Moore at their 35th anniversary celebration. And our presidents continue to bring great distinction here to the university. James Mieskenz was recently elected to the American Association of State Colleges and Universities. President Tomas Morales, our newest addition to the university in a leadership role, was elected to the governing board of the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. And I'd like to commend Vice Chairman Philip Berry and the women college presidents who are with us today and the deans on being honored by the feminist press at their 37th annual gala that took place on Tavern on the Green on November 5. President Eduardo Marti, congratulations on being named the distinguished alumnus of New York University's Alumni Association. Remember, on December 15, December 5, salute to scholars. I hope all of you-- I hope all of you will be there. And, Mr. Chairman, I will ask for an executive session at the end of this public meeting on some appointments and some other matters that need to be discussed in executive session. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I would just like to add my thanks, and I know Chancellor, how grateful you also are to Dave Field for his excellent work at the law school. So lots of people to congratulate for that. Are there comments or questions on the chancellor's report? I know trustee Morales would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apology for being late, but it took me two hours to come from the Bronx to here. Amazing. I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Governor Spencer and the New York State Senate for my reappointment to seven-year term, and to thank Chairman Schmidt, Chancellor Goldstein, Senator Vice Chancellor and Secretary Jay Hirschensohn, and all members of the Chancellery and the college president for their support. I believe that in recent years, CUNY has risen to the higher levels of leadership in all of higher education, and it has been a privilege and honor to help contribute to the management of sector of the system. Chancellor, CUNY enrollment increases and attractiveness to families throughout the city and state are deeply appreciated in the community, as is the great work you are doing to obtain new resources. Many of the special initiatives I have been involved with, such as the creation of new linkages with the Dominican Republic on student collaborations and exchanges, the Osto Community College Teacher Training Program, and the John Jay College Law Enforcement Training Program, have provided new hope and great educational benefits. Here in New York City, I'm very proud of our work to extend outreach, such as the opening of CUNY in the Heights and CUNY Express, the creation and marketing of Nueva York on CUNY TV, the Spanish-language magazine show covering Hispanic communities and concerns, and the extraordinary work that is being done to assist new immigrants who often arrive here with little understanding on how higher education institutions can help them navigate many barriers to a better life. Again, I want to thank the chancellor for his support of the development of a new student scholarship and mentoring program of the Dominican-American Foundation over the past three years. When I participated in the recent CUNY trip to Washington, I joined the Osto Community College delegation, meeting with the representative of Congressman Charlie Rangell. At the invitation of his office, I wrote to the congressman, working closely with Vice Chancellor Hirschensohn, to seek support for additional funds to expand CUNY services program. Ladies and gentlemen, what we are doing to help immigrants obtain citizenship and resolve their immigration problems more so than any other university anywhere is an invaluable service that I hope to be even more involved with in the years ahead. Finally, I hope you will all support and attend the first gala to be held in recognition of the achievement of CUNY alumni of Dominican descent, to be held on Saturday, December 8, in the Gray Hall at City College at 6:00 p.m. This is being organized by CUNY Institute of the Dominican Study at City College. I really hope that you will give support. This is the first time that we're going to do this celebration, this historical celebration, and I personally want to say all of you come and attend. This is very important for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Morales. Other comments or questions for the chancellor? If not, we'll turn to the policy items requiring a vote. I'd like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for November 26, 2007. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That carries. I'd like to move item number two, the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of September 24, 2007. You have a copy of the draft minutes in section two of your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Any revisions, comments on the minutes? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That carries. We'll turn next to the committee reports, and we'll begin with the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. I'd like to call on trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on November 5, 2007, and approved the following resolutions. Calendar item 3A is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a memorandum of understanding with the State University of New York System Administration, NYLINK, or NYLINK, excuse me, for a one-year term, which formalizes and extends CUNY's ongoing relationship with NYLINK to receive critical library services for 10 CUNY college libraries in the CUNY central office. The amount of these services will be for a one-year term, shall not exceed $1.3 million. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of this item.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, calendar item 3B is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a license agreement with Springer Science Business Media LLC on behalf of the university. Springer offers electronic versions of copyrighted material over the Internet. This material consists of electronic journals with multimedia supplements, electronic reference works, and electronic books. Libraries from 11 senior colleges, two community colleges, and the central office will participate and have electronic access to over 1,000 journals, books, and other academic materials. The total amount of the agreement shall not exceed $982,000 for a three-year term. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of this item.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, calendar item 3C is a resolution to adopt the university's fiscal year 2008, 2009 operating budget request. Subject to the availability of resources, the university seeks a total of $2,365 million for the university. This total includes additional funding of $166.5 million, comprising 800, excuse me, $84.6 million for baseline needs and $81.9 million for programmatic increases. Of the $166.5 million in new funds needed, the university is seeking $115.9 million in state and city aid, $102.7 million from the state, $13.2 million from the city, representing support for full mandatory costs and 30% of programmatic costs. Consistent with the provisions of the CUNY PAC Compact, now in its third year, the university will fund the remainder of its needs through philanthropic support, base budget restructuring and redeployments, and revenue from targeted enrollment growth and a modest tuition increase, holding harmless those who cannot afford to pay, and utilizing government, private, and campus-based financial aid and scholarships, with the tuition revenues to be used solely for programmatic improvements. Mr. Chairman, I now move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I now call upon Vice Chancellor Nisto Malave to offer some background on the request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, let me tell you what you have before your, in front of you, and what I will be reviewing. One, you have the 2008-2009 budget request book with the spiral bound that has all the numbers and all the details, which I will not go over today. I will be reviewing, however, the PowerPoint presentation entitled "The Review of the Current CUNY Budget." That's the green PowerPoint presentation. And I'll be very, very brief. I'd like to begin by, and I'll be going over the actual budget document. But on page two, what I'd like to just first indicate is to give you a little flavor of the current budget status of the university and the success of the budget strategy thus far, and we're in year two of the CUNY Compact. And as the first dot point illustrates, we began this fiscal year, notwithstanding the challenges that the state faces, making a $60 million investment. That was the result of the compact in terms of the support that we got from the city and the state, and that's generating a tremendous amount of activity on the campuses with the hiring of full-time faculty, the financing of laboratories. And this is what the promise of the compact for year three is, and this is what we're going to be asking of your indulgence for our year-three request of the CUNY compact, so this kind of investment can continue. As the chancellor indicated earlier, the enrollment for 2008 continues very nicely. Not only are we having sufficient revenues from enrollment to cover the cost of the compact, but the revenues, the enrollment is rising at three times the level that we record for in the compact. So not only is the college is able to make that $60 million investment program for those campuses that are generating additional revenues, they'll be able to make additional investments above and beyond that. On page three, I just cite a few examples of exactly the kind of investments we're making. Roughly $31 million, at least $31 million, is finding its way into supporting the flagship environment and academic programs, and support including over $10 million for full-time faculty and a little under $4 million for library support, which is significant adjunct support for the instructional program. Eight-and-a-half million dollars is being devoted to hiring more full-time advisors and counselors on our campuses, including career counseling and services for students with disabilities. Seven million dollars, this is the other side of the capital budget, in addition to the fact that we have all these facilities and all that, we need to make improvements in the amount of dollars that we provide for maintaining that infrastructure, and about $7 million is being devoted to that, including $1.00 million focusing on environmental health and safety. So this is the energy that's going on in the campuses, the investments that are being made. On page four, I just gave you a snapshot of where we are right now. We begin with the 2007 base, which is where we started off last year at a little over $2 billion. And then you have on the third column there, the 2008 adopted budget. This is where we began the year. And as you can see, that was a considerable increase in support of $180.2 million, a little under $150 million in state support, which is 14.5%, and $31.3 million in city support. It was a significant infusion of funds. A lot of that covered the mandatory cost increases, which, when I said earlier, is only a $60 million investment program, because all the other dollars went to cover our energy costs, our fringe benefit costs, and could not be devoted toward the investments that we would like, but they're nevertheless very important, very costly items that we have in our budget, and you'll see it again when I go over the budget requests for '09. But we started with a little bit of $180 million this year. So on page five, just to sort of review the compact again, and it's important that it always be reviewed, the first, the key, the key element of the compact is the first dot point, that the state and the city of New York, the public supporters of the university, must continue to support at least 100% of the costs or 100% of the costs of that fringe benefits, that energy, those OTPS inflationary costs. And in this particular request, we're asking for an increase that the state and the city cover 30% of the investment program. And I'll have some of the numbers in the continuing pages. But that's the first key item. The rest of it, you're familiar with, the friends and the colleges, where I think the chancellor has indicated before, we've already reached our $1.2 billion target. We continue to raise sufficient dollars at this university, and those dollars ought to be devoted toward supporting the instructional program on the campuses, and the compact requires that. The third dot point, the university through its continued drive toward greater efficiencies, restructuring, and improved productivity. Despite the fact that we recognize that we have a tight budget, we still have $2.2 billion, and that's still a lot of money. And we require the colleges to always reshape their budgets, look carefully, particularly as we seek to get tuition increases from students, and particularly as we seek to get donors to give CUNY money, that they recognize that CUNY is spending its money wisely and is always looking to achieve efficiencies and productivity. It's very, very important that both the state and the students and the philanthropists recognize that. Finally, the final piece is what the students pay through two pieces. One, that enrollment growth that the chancellor speaks to continues to generate revenue, supported the colleges. And secondly, we're calling for, in this particular request, for an increase of 5% for the senior colleges and 5% for the community colleges, $100 per semester for the undergraduate students, and $70 per semester at the senior colleges, and $70 per semester at the community colleges. And let me just for a brief moment sort of review the sort of history of the compact and the tuition question. A number of years ago, when we started the compact and we called upon the state to support it, you know, the state was in pretty flush times, and the revenue was pretty robust, and the state was able, in year one of the compact, to basically buy out the component of the tuition increase. So although we had a recommended tuition increase at the time, the state of New York, again, given the revenues that were coming in, were able to cover that, and basically, we did not have to actually do the tuition increase in year one. In year two, it's a little bit more complicated. The state was not as flushed, the downturn was beginning, and the state of New York, we had a very good executive budget. Governor Spencer's first budget was, covered all our mandatory costs, provided an additional $4 million in investment. The legislature added another $6 million in investment for a total of 10, but left an $18 million gap that we were able to fill largely through one-time energy savings and the likes. We were able to make that investment, but we still structurally were left with that hole that does not continue into the out years. So which is why in 2009, instead of roughly the two-and-a-half, 3% that we had been calling for, we're calling for, in effect, two years' worth of two-and-a-half percent increases to make up for the fact that the legislature did not make up for the lack of tuition in the current year and going forward. That's why the two-and-a-half became 5%. So that's just an important sort of review of the history of the tuition component of the compact. On page six, another very, very critical component of the compact is that the state of New York must continue to maintain its very robust financial aid programs. As you know, the tuition assistance program in the state spends nearly $1 billion in providing tuition assistance for students, and many tens of thousands of students currently at CUNY do not pay tuition as a result of that program. As a result of that program, the modest increases that we're asking for of $100 will be completely covered within the top guidelines. And as the second point illustrates, and as the chancellor made repeatedly a commitment, that no student will be denied the ability to maintain a matriculation if even the $100 increase in tuition makes it problematic for them to continue. And has the directive, the college presidents, to raise through philanthropy whatever money is needed to be raised to make that a reality. And we'll be working with the college financial aid offices to make sure we understand and identify all those students, that we engage in the kind of campaign so that if the tuition goes through, that the students who are in need of assistance know where to go, and we have a system in place to make sure that they get that assistance. The other component of the compact, which is also critical, is that the students who are being asked to pay more need to be also invited to the table to make decisions on the investment program, not to run the campuses, but to be in part, in parcel of where the investment programs go. The students who are the ones who are on the front lines, we need to respect their views on this thing. It's very, very critical. The compact fails if it doesn't take the student consultations very seriously. And that is a commitment that we have and will continue to have, and that the university will not accept any plans that were developed, that were not developed in full consultations with the elected student leadership, as well as with the elected faculty leadership, even though they're not increasing their tuition. But nevertheless, they're part of campus governance, and we have to do this as a team. Okay, on page seven, I just simply illustrate just a couple of the areas of investment. The most significant area, and again, this all goes back to the development of the CUNY Master Plan. This board approves and adopts a master plan that is submitted to the regents, the regents in turn approve it, and that guides the development of these plans. It's a very significant plan that we have. We're planning on hiring 500 new full-time faculty under this budget proposal. That is an ambitious goal, but we are far behind for where we need to be in our faculty ranks. And unless we think big, we're not going to get there. And this budget's central message is the hiring of full-time faculty. But not just all full-time faculty across the board. On the second dot point, we're targeting 100 of those faculty members for the Decade of the Science in the so-called 10 disciplines of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So they'll be very, very targeted to those areas that are in critical need, that are being shepherded through the Office of Academic Affairs. And finally, the bolstering of student support services. You can't have the solid academic programs while also having solid student support services, whether it be advising and counseling, mental health counseling, or career services. And as the second dot point illustrates there, the Campaign for Student Success, the Decade of the of Science, and the implementation of the CUNY first, which is the major overhaul of our administrative systems, which is not very sexy to talk about, but was essential for the future of this university. As the chancellor indicated, I think we're beginning to see the gains of the Campaign for Student Success when he referred to the increase in the FTEs. There are more students who are taking more credit so they can have timely completion for degrees, and we believe that's in part as a result of the emphasis that we're putting on the Campaign for Student Success. On page nine, you begin to see some of these numbers. The total request, the total set of priorities of the university for '09 is $189 million, 141.9 at the seniors and 47.1 at the community colleges. 84.6 of that, 189, are entirely for mandatory cost increases, fringe benefits, energy, the stuff that you can't see, but it's very, very expensive. The programmatic components, the investment plan is 104.4, 79 at the senior colleges, 25.4 at the community colleges. And as you can see from the two top rows, the flagship environment, which is where the full-time faculty is, and the research environment with the decade of science is placed, you can see the dominant 80% of this budget request is sharply focused on those two areas. On page 10, you can see how we distribute the 189 million between the stakeholders that the chancellor referred to. The public support continues to be the largest component, 61.4%, or $115.9 million we're seeking in state and city funding. Philanthropy is expected to generate $15 million in support of this budget request. The self-financing components of restructuring generate $7.5 million. That's the amount that we take from our existing budget and direct it toward these master plan initiatives. Enrollment growth and the tuition increase of 5% generate another $50 million, which is the dollars that are needed for the investment program. On page 11, for those who rather see the pie chart, you can see the same numbers in the pie chart. You can see the tuition component representing, tuition increase component 22% of the total, restructuring for philanthropy 7.9, the enrollment growth 4.3, and the public mandatory cost of $84.6 million representing nearly half of the request. Okay, and the next few pages, you just have the total amounts, a couple of tables of senior colleges first. For the senior college total, we're seeking $84.3 million in additional state aid, an increase of 8.4%. And we're seeking a total of $39.6 million in revenue from the tuition. That is the tuition associated with the increase and the expected revenue that we'll generate from enrollment growth, an increase of 6.7 for a total of 123.9 million. On the next page, you see the community college funding by source. You see that we're asking for $42.6 million, the largest share of that being on the state side of 18.4, a little over, a little under 11%. City support of 13.2 million. And the tuition component for the city community colleges, that the increased component plus enrollment generates $11 million for a total of 42.6%. And then finally, on the last table there, you'll see, back to the $166.5 million figure that you heard earlier that the chairman identified, $102.7 million in state aid, this is both for senior and community colleges, 8.7%. $50.6 million in tuition at 13.2. Now you'll probably wonder whether $189 million went. The reason it's not $189 million is because the $50 million from philanthropy and the other $7.5 million is self-financing. We don't need appropriation authority to direct our philanthropic dollars for the colleges. And on pages 15 and 16, just to sort of, you know, the power of the compact, I think, is here. You'll see that we have a history of percent increases in senior college undergraduate tuition from 1983 to 2004. And you can see it started in 1983 at 16.2, the high increase of 37% in 1992, the most recent significant increase in tuition was of 25%. That is the past. That is what we want to stay away from. And we're projecting for '09 a 5% increase in tuition, and an item is no greater than 3% in the years 10, 2010, 2011, 2012. This is what we want it to look like for the students. This is what we believe we have in terms of a proposal that entices the state of New York, entices our philanthropists, and entices the university to work together to develop these revenue streams to support the kind of investment that we're seeing right now at our campuses. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are there questions for the vice chancellor or for the chair of the committee on the budget requests? Comments? Dr. Phillips?
I'd like to start by complimenting Ernesto Malavio for the outstanding degree of consultation and information that the faculty governance of this university has received in preparation of this request. That level of information has led the University Faculty Senate Executive Committee to vote in favor of the compact, including the 2.5% tuition increases going forward. We were a little surprised, as Ernesto knows, about the change to 5% for the coming year and the 3% for future years. And we're concerned, many faculty members are concerned certainly, that the promises for student support from outside funds for, and other funds for those students who can't handle the tuition increase, that those promises be applied to part-time students as well as to full-time students. At the same time, there's very much, as I think I've said, but if I didn't, there's very much to like about this proposal. The large numbers of increased faculty is something that this university desperately needs. We need new, more full-time faculty. We don't need them in substitute lines, we need them in full-time tenure track lines. And that is a good reason to support this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Further comments? Mr. Ramos?
Just a brief background with the students standing. Just a brief background with the students standing with the compact. Last year, introducing the compact to the students of the university student senate, the leaders of the student governments, they approved and voted that we do approve the compact, but they did have apprehensions. And one of the main apprehensions they had were, one, student consultation, and two, the tuition portion of it. This year, again, I presented the compact to the students of the university student senate, and it's a whole new, different group of people. And they're a lot more against it. And the reasons why they're against it are, again, also student consultation, and also the double increase in tuition. And they feel, not only are they against the tuition increase, but to have a double increase, they feel it would be even more detrimental for the students at this point when it comes to finances of the students and in general, in the midst of the city finances that we have right now, and with the city having a spending freeze and talking about cutting the budget, it's even more likely they're afraid that this tuition increase will come. And for it to be doubled is very much on their mind and very much a reason why they don't want to support it. Is there any maybe idea of lessening the tuition to what it was, the increase to what it was last year, and increasing our lobbying efforts? I know USS is putting together, excuse me, a lobbying campaign to work with the university so that we can lobby the state and the city to fully fund the compact this year and even cover the tuition portion of it. Is there any idea of maybe lowering the tuition so that the students can maybe feel a little bit more at ease that if there is a tuition increase, it's not as much?
Yeah, let me respond briefly to that. We have two choices. Nobody likes to see tuition go up, and especially the students, so I'm very sympathetic to that. The two choices that we have are, provide for very large increases for certain students and no increases for other students, all on the basis of their birth. They can come into the system at a point in time where there are very large spikes, and we've seen this. We've seen tuition increases of $1,000, $1,200, and that, I think, had a very chilling effect. And then we've seen periods of maybe two years, sometimes three, where there were no tuition increases at all. That is a very retrogressive approach to levying tuition, and it really hurts students in a very, very significant way and gives other students a pass. The other way is to generate very small increases. And while it is a 5% increase, which represents $100 a semester, I have made the pledge that any student, and I've said this now for three years in a row, any student that is in harm's way, by virtue of an inability to pay even that small increase, we will find a way to make that student whole. Other students are either in a better position to plan their finances so that they can cover these expenses, or that we are meticulous in recommending that tuition increases be indexed to TAP's, the TAP schedule, so that we will always be below the maximum rate. So the vast majority of students are not going to be affected in any significant way. The smaller group of students that may indeed demonstrate that they have a problem, we have made that pledge and we will continue to make the pledge. I don't know what's going to happen when the governor presents his executive budget. He either will support a tuition increase, or he may decide, for reasons only he knows, not to support a tuition increase. But we believe that the compact needs to be followed assiduously. You can't have a half a compact. You either have the compact or you don't have the compact. And if we had implemented the compact, Robert, several years ago, today, the operating percentage would be much lower for students than it is today because we didn't have the compact. So on an ongoing basis, if we were to do this over the life of the master plan with very small predictable increases, the end result would be, over time, that the percentage of the operating needs are going to be less for students than they are, you know, having business as usual. So I think it's important that we embrace this, and in the event that there is a tuition recommendation, the legislature in the past has found a way to either, you know, reduce the impact or eliminate the impact at all. And certainly, we don't have an objection at all. What we want to make sure is that there are sufficient dollars to give each of the presidents so that they can put the full-time faculty in front of the class, put more counselors in work to support students, and provide all of the other operating needs. And that's the way that I think we should behave. But again, I'm sympathetic to your particular plight and understand it.
Are there other comments or questions?
To identify the students is, I know you said you're going to work with the financial aid office. Can you explain exactly how we can, you will identify the students and make the money available to them?
Well, I think that, you know, the first thing to do is a major education campaign so that, as the chancellor said, we're not sure where we're going to end up. But if come June, there is a tuition proposal that's enacted, we will engage in a major education campaign with the student media to make sure that all the campus newspapers get full stories on exactly what the programs that are available. Many students have email accounts at the campuses, so we can do an email blast to all the students who would need financial assistance, somewhere they can go. So those are two ways, I think, that I see, just off at the top of my head, that I would work with the financial aid officers and the campuses to reach out to the students. I think those are the two easiest ways to do it.
Are there further comments?
The last comment is, I know we were speaking about creating guidelines and making sure that students are involved in the consultations with the presidents, with the administration, because as you can see, the students are going to be putting a lot of their own money. And so we want to make sure that student consultation on where the money goes is met and met at an adequate level.
Well, like I said in my remarks, that we won't accept any plan unless we're satisfied that those consultations took place. And you and I have had conversations as to what those guidelines should look like, and we're prepared to issue guidelines to the campuses on exactly what we define to be the minimum level of consultations. They can do more if they like, but there must be a floor of consultations that every campus must engage in. And first and foremost, that means meeting directly with the student governments, the elected student leadership. You could have other forums, you can have other ways of surveying student interests or priorities, but we take that very seriously because we believe strongly that without the student support, this dies. And so we believe strongly that the students have to understand it, they have to understand it well, and they have to have a say in the investments that they make. Now, we're not making them college presidents, but they deserve to be heard, and they deserve to be heard genuinely, not in the last minute, not in a rushed way, but genuinely about the levels of investment that need to be made, and we're absolutely committed to doing that, and working with the university student senate to assure that that happens.
All right. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post? Abstentions?
I abstain, and I'd like to explain why I abstain. As a student representative on the board, I feel that while I understand the essence of the compact, and I believe the students understand the essence of the compact, the tuition portion is very problematic for any student. And while it is a moderate increase, it's still an increase. And while we attend the city university because, not because it's not a education that we deserve to, we don't deserve to get. We can be in private schools, we can be, we have that education, but a lot of times, students can't afford to go to these private schools. And the university serves the purpose to educate us and to give us the opportunity to get the same jobs that the people who graduate from these private schools get. And a lot of times, we can't afford to pay. And the tuition increase is very, very problematic for the students, and that is the reason why I abstain also on the student consultation. And I will gladly work, and I have sent guidelines to the university to look over and so that we can work together so that in the future, consultation between the students and the administration is clear, is concise, and there isn't a he said, she said about who didn't do what and who did what, and so that we can better understand and know that the proposals we get will not be with any taintedness or any problem on the students' part. And so, you know, I'm willing to work with you. Also, I believe, you know, it's not the university's fault where we have to put a tuition increase, it's just the nature of the beast at this point. And a lot of the blame lies on the state and the city. And the state and the city have to invest in their citizens, in the students that attend the city university. And as I said before, I want to work to lobby that they do cover the tuition increase for this year, and so that the students do not have to come out their pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lowder, anything further to report?
No, Mr. Chairman, this concludes the report of the committee on fiscal affairs. Thank you very much.
We'll turn to the committee on academic policy, program, and research. I'd like to call in trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this November meeting, the committee approved 10 policy-eyed matters. Calendar number 4A, Queens College, MS in mental health counseling. This program prepares graduates for licensure as mental health professionals. Mental health counselors offer services that complement those of psychotherapeutic practitioners, i.e. psychologists, psychiatrists, social workers. The program is developed in response to the recent introduction of a licensure requirement for mental health counselors in the state of New York. In 2005, New York State became the 48th state to license mental health counselors. This new licensure- This new licensure is expected to create numerous employment opportunities in mental health and substance abuse services, clinic settings, hospitals, nonprofits, and so on. Graduates who desire advanced studies beyond earning their professional degree will be prepared to apply to doctoral programs in counselor education and counseling psychology. Calendar number 4B, John Jay College for Criminal Justice, BS in Economics. This program is closely linked to John Jay's core mission and will prepare students for employment in law enforcement, policies, analysis, positions related to investigation of economic criminal activities, and of fighting corruption. Graduates will also be prepared to pursue advanced degrees in accounting, law, and economics. Since this is the, the college's first offering in business discipline area, as defined in NICE taxonomy of academic programs, this program will require a master plan amendment. Calendar number 4C, LaGuardia Community College, AA in Writing and Literature. The proposed program offers strong liberal arts preparation at the associate's degree level, with an emphasis on writing and analytical, and analytical abilities. The program introduces students to the global English language liter, literacy tradition, including North American, British, as well as post-colonial literatures. The program provides solid foundation for students wishing to transfer to any baccalaureate program, and especially well-suited for students planning to continue their studies in humanities or social sciences. It fully articulates with English major at Queens College. Calendar number 4D, Your College, BA in Journalism. Your College is proposing a Bachelor of Arts degree in journalism. The proposed major will provide students with a range of knowledge, skills, and techniques needed for entry-level positions in print, broadcast, or online media. It will also offer the appropriate foundation for students wishing to pursue a master degree in the related field. Your College's Department of English already has a highly qualified faculty in the field. The college currently offers a 15-credit minor in journalism, and the proposed program builds on existing successful practices. Calendar number 4E, Hostel Community College, Master Plan Amendment. In June, the Board of Trustees approved an AAS program proposal for Hostels Community College in Digital Design and Animation. New York State Department of Education reviewers have determined that this program will be categorized as a program in fine arts rather than computer science, as we had indicate, initially indicated, and therefore will be the first program in the fine arts program on the NICE taxonomy of academic programs. Therefore, a master amendment, master plan amendment is required. Calendar number 4F, Hostels Community College. I would like to just move the remaining items I through J all together in one block motion.
All right. I'll second the motion. Are there questions for the committee on any of these items 4A through J?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Professor, Dr. Morales?
I, I'm fully support the program in mental health, the master in mental health, but I have to raise my concern. As I said before, allowing the counselor to diagnose and treat mentally ill individuals on private offices is not the proper thing to do, even though I know it's being approved by the New York State, from the New York State, but that doesn't make it right. I believe that the counselor will not be doing a great service to the community if they allow to open their own private practice and treating patient with mental illness. I believe that they should be working conjunction, in collaboration with other professionals, like social workers, psychology, and psychiatry. And in that kind of setting, I think they will be doing an amazing job, because we need them, but not as a private offices. I think that that will be a big, big mistake, and I want to raise my, my concern.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
I do respect trustee Morales's opinion, and we take it very, very seriously. Each of the campuses will be responding to some of the questions you have raised. I would only remind the Board of Trustees that each student will have a 60-credit program required by the New York State licensure regulations. They are required to take a state exam. They also will have 3,000 hours of supervised clinical work. And our campuses are very careful about who they will admit to the master's program in mental health counseling. They interview candidates, they talk to them before they admit them, and then they monitor them every semester to ensure the highest level of professionalism and ethics.
Yeah, let me be clear. I don't, I don't want to be opposed to the program. I think this is a wonderful program. Well, my concern is to allow them to open private practice by themselves, treating mentally ill patients. I'm in psychiatry for 50 years, and I know how difficult it is. If they are allowed to work with collaboration with others, excellent, but by themselves, I think it's a big mistake.
All right. Other comments?
Comment?
Professor Phil?
First of all, I stand in support of these proposals. However, I'd like to comment on the item I, the John Jay College of Criminal Justice, discontinuance of, discontinuation of associate degree admissions. This item was supported by John Jay Faculty Governance and the John Jay Faculty, and I think that's, that's a statement that stands for itself. There was considerable public comment about the item in the public hearing, and I think that reflects the fact that this, of course, will reduce the number of opportunities, at least institutions, who, that offer associate degree programs. And it, it really is incumbent on the city of New York, which is a mainstay of our community colleges, to see to it that there are more seats available in the community colleges, that more resources be made by the city. The budget that Vice Chancellor Malave presented just a moment ago does illustrate the relative deficiencies in how the city is supporting the community colleges, and I think that word should get out. We need more seats, we need more buildings, and we need more faculty. There have been great strides made in the recent past, and particularly in the area of faculty, more needs to be done. And while I think one should offer support for this, the John Jay proposal, it illustrates some of the other things that the city should do.
Thank you. Any other comments? It's been a while. I don't recall if this motion was seconded. I second the motion. It was. Good. Well, I second it for a second time. Are you ready? Aye. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries. Anything further to report?
Just an informational item, very quickly. Executive Vice Chancellor Botman presented to the committee the Graduate School and University Center, the Saul Kripke Center. The school has benefited from a donation of $1.4 million to support the Saul Kripke Center dedicated to the study of works of Saul Kripke, a philosopher of international renown. In 2001, he was the winner of the SHOCK Prize in Logic and Philosophy, which is sometimes compared to the Nobel Prize for Philosophy. Since 2003, Saul Kripke has been a distinguished professor at the CUNY Graduate Center. Although Kripke is a prolific writer, many of his work currently remain unpublished, existing only as tape records or in manuscript. The center will make these archives accessible for scholars and assist Kripke in preparing materials for publication. It will organize conferences on Kripke's work and related topics in philosophy. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration presents the following items for consideration by the Board of Trustees. Item 5A, the establishment of the Dean Peace Professorship at the City College of New York. Brodsky, an alumnus of City College, class of 1964, has made a gift of $750,000 to establish the Dean Peace Professorship. The income will be used to attract a leading national scholar to join the faculty of City College and a department to be selected by the college president. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's approval.
For a second?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. I'd like to present items 5B through D, and they are a series of professorships and scholars being established at Hunter College. I will present these items together as a group. Item 5B, the establishment of the Bertha Cohen Reynolds Professorship at Hunter College. Bertha Capen Reynolds was a progressive educator and clinician whose work broadened social work practice. The purpose of the Reynolds Fellowship Professorship will be to recognize exceptional scholarship and leadership in the field of social work. $75,000 in private funds has been made available to support the professorship at the Hunter College over five years. Professor Mimi Abramowicz, a leading scholar at the School of Social Work, has been recommended to be awarded the first professorship. Item 5C, establishment of the Rosalind S. Yallow Scholar at Hunter College. Rosalind Yallow graduated from Hunter College in 1941 and taught physics there from 1946 to 1950. Dr. Yallow was the first female recipient of the Albert Lasker Award for Basic Medical Research, and in 1977 was awarded the Nobel Prize in Medicine. She also received the National Medal of Science in 1988. The purpose of the Yallow Scholar will be to recognize exceptional scholarship in molecular biology. Private funds in the amount of $50,000 will be used over five years to support the initiative in the Department of Biological Sciences at Hunter College. The college recommends that the first Rosalind Yallow Scholar be Professor David Foster, a prominent expert in this discipline. Item 5D, establishment of the Susan and David Burschad Chief Curator and Professor of Fine Arts at Hunter College. The David and Susan Burschad Foundation has pledged $1 million to the Hunter College Foundation to establish the Susan and David Burschad Chief Curator and Professor of Fine Arts. This gift will enable the college to enrich its national-recognized art department by attracting a leading scholar and curator to enhance its teaching mission. Dr. Roshan Bissaro, former curator at the Museum of Modern Art and a noted art historian specializing in impressionistic art, including that of his great-great-grandfather, Camille Pissaro, will serve as the first Susan and David Burschad Chief Curator and Professor of Fine Arts. Mr. Chair, I present items 5B through D for the board's approval.
I'll second those. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Yes. Professor Phil?
I'd just like to comment on item number 5C, the establishment of the Rosalind S. Yallow Scholar. Rosalind Yallow was a Nobel Prize winner, in addition to being a Hunter graduate, and I'd like to say, as a member of the faculty at Lehman College, she, at the time she graduated from Hunter, Lehman was a Hunt, also called Hunter in the Bronx, and she attended also in the Bronx. Thank you.
Very good. Other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Those, pass?
Thank you. Item 5E, proposed revisions to the guidelines for periodic review and assessment of the chancellor and presidents at the City University of New York. The proposed revisions to the guidelines for the periodic review and assessment of the chancellor and presidents will streamline the process for presidential performance review and integrate the process with the chancellor's annual evaluation of the presidents, known as the Performance Management Process, or PMP. These revisions include reducing the current lengthy five-year review process to three to five years at the chancellor's discretion, appointing an external review team only if the chancellor identifies a specific need for such a team, expanding the solicitation of campus views on presidential performance via an anonymous electronic survey, and the writing of concise presidential self-assessments focused on performance over a three-to-five period, five-year period, and enumeration of personal goals for the upcoming three to five years. Mr. Chair, I present item 5E for the board's approval.
Second? Comments? Questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carries.
Item 5F, naming of the Maxine and Eugene Posman Speech Clinic Library at Lehman College. The Speech Clinic Library at Lehman College is being named in recognition of a $40,000 gift from Maxine and Eugene Posman. The Posmans are regular supporters of and participants in college events, particularly those related to literacy. Mr. Chair, I present item 5G for the board's approval.
Second? Second? Comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
And finally, the naming of the Saul Kripke Center at the Graduate Center. Rabbi Meyer and Dorothy Kripke have donated $1.4 million to establish and operate the Saul Kripke Center at the Graduate Center. A winner of the SHOCK Prize in Logic and Philosophy in 2001, Professor Kripke is considered to be among the world's foremost living philosophers. The center will promote the study of Dr. Kripke's achievements in philosophy. It will also archive, edit, and assist in publishing his previously unpublished materials. Distinguished visiting scholars and graduate students from other institutions will have access to the archives and be invited to protect in conferences and seminars devoted to Dr. Kripke's work and research. Mr. Chair, I present item 5G for the board's approval.
I'd like to second that. Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on trustee Randy Mastrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items from the committee today. Items 6A, resolution authorizing construction contract on behalf of Brooklyn College for James Hall Roof Replacement Project not to exceed $1.695,800. Item 6B, authorizing construction contract on behalf of Hunter College to renovate existing organic chemistry lab and expand HVAC system and digital media laboratory at a project cost, cost not to exceed $1.79 million. And finally, item 6C, which is our resolution approving the capital budget request for fiscal year 08, 09 to fiscal year 12, 13, CUNY's five-year capital program for major bond projects. And I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chancellor Weinsholl to provide a brief summary of the request, and then I'll ask and move that all three items be approved. Vice Chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out to the trustees and the presidents that there's a presentation at your, at your desk. The university's capital budget request for the five-year period of fiscal year 2008, 2009, through fiscal year 2012, 2013, is an unprecedented $8 billion. We're requesting $5.9 billion for the senior colleges and $2 billion for the community colleges and Medgar Evers. The five-year capital budget request was developed by my office in consultation with the colleges. The projects requested originate from approved college master plans and from ongoing condition assessments of the existing building stock. This request focuses on a number of categories. CUNY-wide projects to ensure health and safety and security and facility preservation throughout the university, completion of active and ongoing work such as the West Quad Building at Brooklyn College, BMCC's Fideman Hall replacement, and the new academic building at Medgar Evers College. Projects to support the chancellor's decade of the sciences, including construction of new science facilities, such as at City College, and the university-wide program to update existing science labs, funding for the CUNY First Initiative and network infrastructure upgrades and equipment, and an unprecedented $750 million critical maintenance program intended to bring CUNY's campuses to a state of good repair. Lastly, this request also contains a separate contingency fund for projects to account for the cost increases in New York City construction in our market over the last five years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the committee on the capital budget request or on the two particular items moved? I'll second the committee's motion to begin with. Professor Phil?
I'd like to first congratulate Vice Senator Weinsholl for an aggressive and thorough, I should say, aggressive and comprehensive request. I should say aggressive and comprehensive, request for capital construction. This is exactly what the university needs. At the same time, we know that these requests are done in, with prior collaboration, consultation with the city and the state, and I think this request, when you look at the relative numbers between what the city and the state is putting up, illustrates that the city really could be called on to do a little more for our community colleges. They need more buildings. Fitterman Hall replacement is a replacement, not new, and I think the, the city should try a little harder. Thank you.
Other comments? Questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? That carries. Anything further from the committee? Trustee Mastro?
That concludes our report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks very much. There are two non-action items, which I mention only to give notice to the board. These are two actions taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee, recommended by the chancellor. Item seven A is the approval of a student application management software system that was needed for use during the fall 2008 admission cycle. And item seven B, the approval of the university initiative for the purchase of scientific equipment in the current fiscal year. The approval of this resolution was needed to help expedite the procurement process, so those were items approved by the executive committee. Finally, before the executive session, I'd like to move the honorary degrees that are set out in your, in your meeting books. May I have a second on those honorary degrees? Second. Questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Those carry. That concludes the, this portion of our public business. I'd like now to adjourn the public meeting and go into executive session. We will reconvene in public session following the executive committee.